Okay. Good afternoon. I'll call the meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, January 21st, 2021. We do have member George Nenaro with us via video conference, so he is in attendance today. And I understand there are a couple of people who called in, and if you do wish to speak from your phone, you have to press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, so the first item on our agenda today is a discussion item for 1535 Route 58 LLC to proposed car wash on Route 58 in Riverhead.
Good afternoon, Jeff Murphy for the record. This is an application on a continued discussion about 1535 Route 58 LLC. This is a site plan application for a car wash on Route 58. This application received a special permit from the town board back in June of last year. I included the conditions of approval in my revised staff report. You should have a copy of that January 20th staff report. Public hearing was last held on August 6th, 2020, and that's where we left off with this application. We have since received revised application material in the form of a new site plan. At the public hearing, I included a summary of the issues raised at that time. The first being the attorney and the owner of the adjacent car dealership to the east, they did not want any cross-access of any kind. And I'm going to address that later on as part of the comments section of my presentation. Number two, nearby residents were concerned about the potential noise from the car wash operations. Town board addressed that as a condition of approval, stating that the hours operation were between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, including dumpsters, loading, and deliveries. Nearby residents were concerned about the amount of traffic generated by the proposed use and the locations of the proposed entrances. Concerns were raised by the adjacent car dealership unloading their cars from the street on Pulaski Street. The last comment was that nearby residents expressed concern about site visibility entering and leaving the site due to the change in topography on the south entrance on Pulaski The following were issues raised by the planning board and in the June 15th, 2020 staff report. The first being water recycling. There was a request made by the planning board to see the design, sign and seal by a professional, of the holding tank, filtration system, and oil separator on the first sheet.
Jeff, just on that? Just on that item?
Yes.
Do they have to go to the health department, get approved for the tanks, etc.?
I believe so. And they did include a detail on their first sheet, first sheet of their revised plans. Number two was that the planning board requested a PDF copy of the traffic impact study and subsequent amendment. I emailed all of you a copy of that last night. Number three, there was a request to see the existing buildings and structures on the site on revised plan, and sheet SP 1.3 shows the outlined locations of those existing buildings and structures. Number four, the loading areas were shown in different locations on two of the last versions of the site plan. That has been amended so that it was just in one location, and those are located in the southeast corner of the site by the dumpster enclosure. Number five, it was requested to see a detail, sign and sealed by a New York State licensed engineer, of the proposed retaining wall along the east property line, and sheet SP 1.1 shows a detail of that, cross-section detail of that retaining wall. Number six, there's a request to show the location of the irrigation well, and sheet SP 1.1 shows the location being located on the west side of the building in the triangle grassed area. Number seven was a request to see revised landscaping. This was probably the most numerous comments received about the landscaping on the plan. The first item was requested by member to, instead of having turf, was to use artificial turf rather than real grass to minimize irrigation. And my response to that is, as Stan Carey educated this with me as well, is that the water shortage in the town is not due to a lack of water in the ground, it's a lack of infrastructure to get, to serve that specific project. And since they're providing an irrigation well, and they use landscaping that does not require a lot of water, I think that that would suffice in this application. Item B, there are several very large trees around the perimeter of the site that are going to be saved. We just need a detail sheet to show that these trees will have some sort of protective barrier installed around the drip line of trees prior to the start of construction. So that just needs to be a detail shown on the landscape plan. Item C, it's just we'd like to see some additional vertical integration of landscaping, not just low-lying shrubs around the site. Item D, all the plant sizes, they need to be shown on the revised plan. All proposed trees should be a minimum of three-and-a-half inch caliper. Some of the proposed trees are minimal. All the plant shrub size should be a minimum of five gallons in size. There are going to be a number of mulched and planted beds, but they don't identify what the mulch is going to be. In this instance, given the commercial nature of the site, it's recommended that a rock material, such a red rock material, be used instead of a wood product. It would be much more durable than a wood product, such as a shredded hardwood mulch.
In C, are you giving him a number for, instead of the five feet for parking spaces and landscape, are you going to put an eye on that?
Which item was that, Jeff? Which one?
C is in Charlie.
Oh, C? Yeah, that goes to that there are a number of parking landscape, and that there, there's only a five-foot wide landscape strip along Pulaski Street, so we're recommending that there be some vertical integration of landscaping. I don't know if they can fit it in within that area because it's one that's very narrow width until you've got a retaining wall there. So what I'm recommending is, instead of planting trees, street trees along that area, is that they put some trees within that triangle sod grass area to the west of the building. They'll do much better there than it would in a five-foot planted bed next to Pulaski Street. So that would be my recommendation, is that they just relocate the vertical plants and put them in that sod area, they'll do much better. Marty and I need to look at, really look at the plans proposals by the ARB. Some of the recommendations were, in my opinion, not recommended to you. For example, one of the recommendations was to have hydrangeas. Hydrangeas, if you know, those are those big purple or blue and white flower ornamental shrubs, you typically see those at the base of a house. Those are maintenance and water hogs. They require a lot of irrigation, they require a lot of fertilizer, you have to prune them at certain times of the year. It's not, and not appropriate for a commercial application, especially as a border to a property in a highly sunlit, dry, arid condition. So Marty and I agreed that we're going to go back and revisit the types of plantings. Item number eight, an updated title report is needed. The architectural review board did review the application in November 18th, and they had a number of recommendations to which Marty has made, but it needs to go back to them before they get final approval. Engineering had a number of comments back at the end of last year. The revised plans were sent to Drew Dillingham, town engineer, but we have not heard back from him. The fire marshal's only last really requirement or recommendation is the cross-axis with the car dealership to the east. They still want to see the cross-axis even if just for emergency purpose only, and that's what staff recommendation is. And I believe the applicant has agreed to it, is that they'll pave to connect to the existing cross-axis to the car dealership to the east. It will have a depressed concrete curb, but then there'll be two ballers and a chain across it so that pedestrian, you know, everyday traffic won't go through it. It would just be there for emergency purposes only. And that's it for staff's comments.
Jeff, number five, could you repeat that one for me, please?
Sure. This was, we wanted to see a detail of the proposed retaining wall that is, or needed along the eastern property line, and they did provide us with a cross-section of that, and that's shown on sheet SP 1.1, I believe it is.
But what was this, can you read this specific requirement like you read it before?
It says, number five is, need to see a detailed, signed and sealed by a New York State licensed PE or engineer, of the proposed retaining wall located along the east property line.
Okay, and where is that?
It's right, if you take a look on the first sheet.
Yes.
It is the, and Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, it is this gray shaded line that you see.
No, no, I see the detail for it on the sheet, it's right in the middle on the top.
Yeah.
But where is the PE stamp for that?
It was done by Marty Zanusski, a licensed architect, not a PE.
Okay, but that's not what you read to us.
That is correct.
So do we need that or not?
This is only a four-foot retaining wall, I believe, and...
So it's not necessary?
No.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
So we have a couple of cleanup items with this in terms of the plan landscaping, and we need a detail of the ballers with the chain across it. So my recommendation is we get the revised plans, wait to hear back from Drew, and then if the board is okay with that, we'll bring it back to show you the revised plans, and at that time we can have a resolution for preliminary approval.
That's fine. I just have one question.
Sure.
It was probably already answered, so forgive me. The, is there any soil removal proposed? Because if you look at it from a street level, it looks like there's a real steep elevation change from the street level.
There's going to have to be.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would require approval from the town board.
Okay.
And that'll be in the resolution.
Great. All right. Does Marty have anything that he wants to add or comment on for all of those comments that you read off?
No, other than the fact that I think everything that Jeff covered was pretty much included all of our discussions. Wasn't happy to sit down with Jeff and just finalize it and get it back to you. I think we've addressed all the issues, and we're just looking forward to getting that back to you and moving toward a preliminary site plan approval resolution.
Marty, I had a question for you also. The large-capacity oil interceptor, is that recognized by a licensed professional, or is it the industry standard? It's going to make sure it's something that's able to handle the capacity that you're going to put through it.
That's based on an industry standard. I will point out that when the building is engineered in terms of the equipment, because there are a number of different vendors and manufacturers of car wash equipment like this, that will dictate the gray water, the, you know, the whole process and the level of content in the gray water. So that will be relooked at, and that will be part of the final board of health approvals also. That'll all be, that's all required to be monitored and actual permits provided prior to operation by the health department, I believe, including hazardous materials.
Thank you.
Okay, does George, do you have any comments or questions, George?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question is regarding the placement of the vacuums. In one area, they say six vacuums, in the other one, they say nine. My question is this, it takes a lot more time to vacuum a vehicle than it does to wash the vehicle. What impact will this have on the backflow of traffic, holding up the traffic through the wash? Will it be, will the vacuums be prior to or after the car is washed?
I'm actually very glad you asked that question because I had a note here to myself that I would have forgot to have brought up. The, on the notes that Jeff wrote where he says there are nine vacuum locations, if you, if you look at the plan, the vacuum locations are located between two parking stalls. So one of the stations actually has the hoses and the connections for two stalls. So there are 18 stalls that can vacuum at one time.
Right.
Okay.
And that does mistake in my staff report, I say there are six, there's actually nine locations, and there are 18 parking stalls. So that should be able to address that issue.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll make the revisions and we'll bring them back for the preliminary.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is 1792 Middle Road Breezy Hill Group. This is a discussion for a draft environmental impact statement. Do we have Jeff Seaman?
Yep. Good afternoon, Jeff Seaman here. This is the review of the draft environmental impact statement that was submitted for the Breezy Hill C and D processing facility for the crushing and processing of concrete, asphalt, and soils. I submitted a letter together with a multiple-page report on the review of the EIS to Jefferson Murphy on or about January 20th. In summary, I found that the EIS was deficient for review by the public at this time, although the majority of the document is in compliance with the requested scope that was issued by the planning board as the lead agency and is consistent with secret standards. There were a number of inconsistencies that just did not seem to add up, and I felt that rather than have this go back and forth among public discussions and the board, it would be best to get real clear numbers and ownership issues resolved by the applicants before we have this ready for public review. Briefly, the quantities of both imported, processed, and unprocessed materials were inconsistent between statements made in the EIS and applications that are submitted to the New York State DEC for the Part 360 permit. This leads to some complications because the lead agency is the planning board for site plan and EIS, but DEC is an involved agencies, and we cannot have two separate series of numbers and quantities distributed to two different agencies. I also had questions regarding the ownership and who the exact applicants are in this case. While Breezy Hill Group is an LLC, there are a number of references and applications and consent orders issued to an organization called Roadwork Ahead. There's no explanation in the document as to what the association is. There do appear to be perhaps some common ownerships with respect to the individuals, but we need to know precisely who is responsible for the EIS, who is the applicant for site plan, and who is the applicant for the Part 360, because I would expect those to be not only consistent, but the same applicant throughout, so that if this board decides to put particular conditions on the application, or the DEC does, that we're all talking to the same people. I have recently received a copy of the solid waste management plan that was prepared by the Town of Riverhead in its 2009 iteration. This was part of the scope that the applicant was to review in order to allow the benefits and needs of their project to either comply or not comply with the benefit, needs, and goals of the solid waste management plan prepared by the town. Now, it's important to understand that throughout multiple solid waste management plan updates that have been taking place for the past 15 years, the DEC has never concluded its review, and the town has never really issued a final plan. However, there's sufficient information in all these plans that would document the number of existing facilities that are similar to this application, the quantities that those facilities process, as well as their locations. And I think it's imperative that both the board and the applicant understand that since there are a number of these facilities that already exist in the town, that the need for another facility similar to the ones that exist really should be clearly established in the EIS. Unfortunately, the 2020 version of the solid waste management plan was not made available to either myself as the reviewer or to the applicants preparers at the EIS, so we were both stuck in this awkward position to gather this information. So I'm requesting that the engineering department, who is responsible for that document, provide at least some of the pertinent information to the planning board as lead agency and the planning department and the applicants preparers, so we can dovetail that information into their EIS. Lastly, I have had some email exchanges with New York State DEC since they are the primary involved agency on this application, and we have agreed to do a much more refined, coordinated review, perhaps try and run those reviews parallel with each other. So while the lead agency will have the responsibility of making a determination on the acceptance of the EIS, its distribution, its collection of comments, the review of the final EIS, and a finding statement, the DEC will be working on their Part 360 application to make sure, again, that all the information is consistent. Lastly, there was an order on consent that was issued by DEC that this board is aware of that was because material had been imported to the site and processing had begun prior to a site plan approval. The DEC stopped that operation as well because there was no permit issued by their agency. What I can see is that for about 34 months, that material remains on-site. We have acknowledged to DEC that while they have enforcement action, any idea to process that material or use it on-site really could not move forward without at least an acknowledgement by the planning board, because the applicant obviously can't operate that site until this board grants an approval, and that won't happen until the EIS is completed. Perhaps one remedy, which was not discussed in the EIS, would be to export all the material off the site, and there is no schedule provided in the EIS as to when the remediation will be completed. And I just thought it would be important to also ask that the EIS address those issues. So that's about it, unless you have questions on the report that I've already issued.
Jeff, some of the questions that we had discussed earlier on had to do with the groundwater in that area. Specifically, there was some documented contamination in the immediate area by, I believe, the health department. I don't know if you were aware of that. But also establishing the groundwater flow direction in that specific area because there are private residential wells over there. So did we accurately or comfortably capture that in this draft?
Yes, the lead agency instructed a good deal of groundwater information be collected. The applicants installed four groundwater monitoring wells. There are three down gradient wells and one up gradient well. What they have determined is that there are some PFOAs that they picked up. Those were below the threshold of any type of action that would be within maximum acceptable limits, but they were picked up by the up gradient well, which would indicate that the contaminant is flowing to the site from another source, not generated at the site. The EIS does not clarify as to whether or not these four wells located on the six-acre site will remain and continue to be monitored throughout the duration of their facility operations, and that is a question we are asking them to answer. But I do know that they have done a good job to establish the groundwater flow direction.
Okay, and also, what about noise impacts to the immediate residents in the area?
Say again, please, I could not hear that.
Noise impacts to the residents in the immediate area?
So they conducted actual noise studies at a facility that apparently the same owners or common owners operate in Westbury. They used standard noise monitoring equipment, and they have found that there would not be a noise impact on the residents. They did suggest, and I say it's a suggestion because I'm just a little unclear as to whether it's a clearly stated mitigation, adjusting the hours of operation in order to best control any nuisance impacts on the public. Going back to both the water issue and other nuisance impact issues, when it comes to dust, they're suggesting that they will, you know, wet the area out, which is fairly typical. However, we do recognize there's no public water supplies available in the area. I have asked for an emergency response plan, which is part of the Part 360 permit, but I have asked that to specifically address fire suppression. I know that's a concern of this board regarding other applications in this region of the town. So once they clarify the hours of operation, I think that will give us a better perspective on how noise may or may not impact the neighborhood. One observation I made was a piece of the processing equipment, which will be the loudest operating as far as beyond diesel, the crushing of concrete, had a throughput of four... the crushing of concrete, had a throughput of 450 ton per hour. So based on some of the numbers, which again are still somewhat inconsistent, they could process a good deal of material in a very short period of time. If their original application was 500 ton per day, they could operate that machine in an hour and move entirely through their stockpile. So I think the applicant needs to clarify their, not only hours of operation, but the hours that certain pieces of equipment will operate. And again, this goes back to the confusing number on their imported material, their stockpiles of processed and unprocessed material. The area those stockpiles will be placed because they did not provide clear geometric measurement. We are limited in this area to not more than two acres by zoning for any outside storage. And I've included their equipment in that outside storage area. So that information is still unknown.
Okay, just a question for Greg or Jefferson. The Solid Waste Management Plan, the latest version from 2020, is that available? Can we get that to Jefferson, to Jeff rather?
So I did reach out to the engineering department. The town engineer was pretty, seemed adamant that it was not ready. It was in a draft form. He stated that it hadn't been approved by DEC or any outside agencies, so he was, he seemed reluctant to distribute that to us right now.
So as of right now, we're going off the 2009 version?
Correct.
Do we know any significant differences between the two documents?
I couldn't speak to that. I'm not familiar with the 2009 or the 2020 because it was never made available to us.
Okay, thank you.
May I offer a comment on that? One conundrum we're in is that the 2009 version expressly states that there are no planned private or public solid waste management facilities envisioned in the town at that time, and also states that by zoning ordinance, none are permitted anywhere in the town. So, one issue we will need to wrestle out between the 2009 version and any changes that have taken place since then, whether or not that condition still stands. And if it does not stand, how was it changed? When was it changed? And where's the documentation to support that? Remember, the applicant went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for some interpretations regarding crushing of concrete, and then went back again for some clarification respect to the asphalt and the soils. But now, I read a 2009 document, very specific to solid waste management, that says no facilities are permitted anywhere in the town. So I need to know, in order to catch up to 2021, where are we above and beyond just what is stated in the uses in the industrial A?
I agree with Jeff, that was my comment as well. It doesn't look like, at this point, if you go by that statement, that the facility would not be permitted at all.
The applicant did not, to my understanding, again, this is just my understanding of reviewing the background information, specifically asked, is a solid waste management facility permitted in the industrial A? It was more on the processing. And while we're on the whole land use issue, I had a question as to who is receiving the materials after they're processed? Because this application shows not only unprocessed materials coming in to be processed, but previously processed materials from some other source, which I've asked to be identified, coming onto the site as well. If this becomes a wholesale operation, wholesale is permitted in the industrial A zoning use district only by a special permit, which would run them back to the town board for that review. And they are, the town board at this time has not been included, I believe, in that special permit requirement or as an involved agency under SECRE. So, all these issues need to be hashed out much more clearly before we can accept the document for distribution.
So, I guess that raises some questions for us as a board. How did we get this far if it's not a permitted use right now?
So, as Jeffrey stated, the applicant did go to the ZBA for an interpretation for the asphalt and concrete crushing. I think part of the question, and as we're learning through, as this information is really flushed out through the EIS, you know, the question, as he stated, of wholesale facilities, solid waste management, was never really clearly indicated in their initial site plan application. When the application came in, it was strictly for a asphalt and concrete crushing facility. They did get the ZBA interpretation where the ZBA stated that it wasn't explicitly prohibited. So I mean, this really, the expansion of this information has yielded new information that may change the scope and will require additional considerations from our end. But, you know, some of these things were just not made apparent to us in the initial application.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions? George, anyone? Okay, so what is the timeline for us to...
Excuse me, Stan. Stan, I have a question.
Okay, George.
Sorry, sorry, I had to unmute myself. This question is for Jeffrey Seaman. Jeff, George Lanaro here with a question. Is any of the material that is currently on-site, has that been or not been refurbished, redone? Do we know?
So we have a variety, hello, George, good to see you again. We do have a variety of different stockpiles on-site that have been identified in the EIS very clearly with a description of what those materials are. All the materials have been tested under what is called the Part 375 protocols, which DEC uses to determine the chemical constituents in all of aggregates and soils. And they did not come up with any significant numbers from a chemical standpoint. However, they do have a stockpile of material that has physical contaminants in it, which are described as pieces of wood, perhaps some wire, some ceramic tile, et cetera, which the DEC will not allow as part of these recycled RCA byproducts. That material has to leave the site. And I don't know if that answers your question.
My, just not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I understand that the wood and whatever might be in there. My question really, I should have said, was are there any hazardous material in there? Will they be dealing with hazardous type materials?
No, and in fact, clearly hazardous materials of any nature are excluded from all zoning districts in Riverhead. That is in the code. The question I raised, while they may be bringing in from sources, you know, road construction, et cetera, concrete and asphalt, they also include demolition, and that's a very broad...
That's unknown.
Exactly. So the DEC does have very strict regulations on that. But realistically, the more sites you have, not only throughout Long Island, but certainly in Riverhead, the more difficult it is to monitor all of these sites. And that's why I'm trying to work this EIS more closely with the DEC to identify, how are they going to monitor the site? Since if a permit is issued by them, they have the responsibility of its oversight.
All right, good, good.
But at this, at this point, there were no, you know, significant contaminants identified in the stockpiles that are there.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Carey, just to your point, I believe you were talking about timeframes and the next steps and deadlines. So, the applicant submitted this DEIS on December 30th of 2020. Per the SECRE regulations, the lead agency has 45 days to determine if the DEIS is adequate for public review and comment. That would place that deadline at, I believe it's February 13th. Now, in terms of our next meeting, the next available meeting would be February 4th. What I would recommend is I would prepare a resolution deeming this DEIS to be inadequate for public review. And in that resolution, I would include Mr. Seaman's comments in his review and distribute that back to the applicant so that they can revise their DEIS accordingly and then resubmit.
Okay, great.
So the clock would restart then?
The clock would restart once they resubmit. And I believe, I believe it's 30, once they resubmit, I believe it's 30 days that we have rather than 45. But again, those would be just additions and modifications to the DEIS. But again, they would submit it, and then the clock would start again.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next item on the agenda is East End Country Kitchens.
All right, so this will be a very quick update on a project we've had outstanding for a little while. As you recall, the East End Country Kitchens was a site plan seeking approval to construct a 5,760 square foot single-story warehouse building along with parking, lighting, and related improvements on a 1.6 acre parcel located at 121 Edwards Avenue in Calverton. The application did receive preliminary approval from this board on October 1st, 2020 by Resolution Number 2020-063. Among them were conditions that prior to final site plan approval, the applicant will obtain a water availability letter from the Riverhead Water District. There was a lot of back and forth between the Riverhead Water District, specifically as it relates to the location of the RPZ. As you may recall, there is a, it's like a paper street that serves as access to this parcel. The Water District was questioning whether they would allow it to be installed. They weren't sure if it was a public right-of-way, a private right-of-way. That issue has been addressed. I did get a water availability letter from the Water District dated January 12th of this year. And the other amendment to the plan was in terms of fire marshal review. Fire marshal was looking for a fire hydrant within the site. After some back and forth between the applicant and the fire marshal's office, they have agreed the applicant will install a fire hydrant on the east side of Edwards Avenue, directly across from that right-of-way access. That fire hydrant will be installed at the expense of the applicant, but it will be maintained by the Riverhead Water District. That was, like I said, that was the most significant issue that they were wrestling with before we could get to this point. As you may recall, they had, they submitted a significant re-landscaping plan to rectify some illegal clearing that had been done by the neighboring golf course owners probably 20 some odd years ago. So we have a final approval resolution at this meeting.
So they're not going to require a fire suppression system? Just a hydrant on which side of Edwards Avenue?
It would be on the east side of Edwards Avenue, directly across from the access to the site.
So that access road is actually a road that can be traveled by fire apparatus?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And yeah, they, there was no, there was initially, they were going to be required to sprinkler that warehouse building. They did something with the construction of it and installing some walls, which eliminated that need, but will be served by that hydrant.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
George?
I have no question.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Item 4 on the agenda, LIDL Riverhead Administrative Site Plan for, this is the Toys R Us, right?
Correct, okay. This is just an update on this application, which was previously reviewed by the planning board at the November 19th, 2020 meeting. This is for Lidl Riverhead Site Plan Application at 1151 Old Country Road. This is, this application proposes remodeling of the existing 35,167 square foot building into a grocery store, including facade upgrades, paving improvements, landscaping, and lighting improvements. December 11th, 2020 revised plans for the project dated December 8th, 2020, were received from Bowler Engineering. These plans implement a future potential cross-access per previous discussion at the planning board meeting on the eastern boundary of the parcel. They clarify the nature of the landscaping changes to be made near the northwestern edge of the property per staff report comments. And these plans also clarify the nature of the pavement improvements per engineering department comments. Members of the Architectural Review Board had previously reviewed the project at the November 18th, 2020 meeting and had provided a suggestion to implement a shuttle line or other similar element to the front facade of the building. The applicant implemented this suggestion and resubmitted the project for review at the December 16th, 2020 meeting. Written comments provided by the board at this meeting found no objection with the newly revised facades, but the applicant was informed they must submit a revised landscaping plan which implements street trees along Old Country Road. This is in reference to Town Code Section 301, 236B that requires street trees to be planted along Route 58. However, the board can vary this requirement if it's deemed that there is an aesthetically acceptable substitute provided. Figure 1, I've shown the approximate nature of the existing landscaping on-site. There is an additional tree proposed near the street frontage per...
Brian, is there water, landscaping water in that front lot of picture one?
I'm sorry?
Is there, do you know if there's irrigation in that front section? And I'm looking at a picture, figure one.
I'm not aware. We do have the applicant on the Zoom call, they might be able to answer.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that. I know it's been vacant, so it's a little bit rundown. I just want to make sure it's going to be brought up to standard.
I would have to confirm if there's irrigation in that front landscape buffer.
Excuse me, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Sorry, it's Kristin Zaluka from Bowler.
Thank you. The site plan application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. They, in a letter dated December 1st, 2020, they indicated that it was a matter for local determination as there appears to be no significant county-wide or inter-community impacts. Site plan application was also referred to the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, indicated that a permit from the department will be required and that the plan should be revised to show ADA compliant handicap ramps at access and that all broken or non-compliant sidewalking and curb should be replaced. The town fire marshal's office also received the application and indicated that the front and west side of the building shall be designated fire lanes and that the integrity of the timber retaining wall at the rear of the property should be inspected and evaluated by a licensed engineer.
Has that been done?
It has not yet been done. The New York State DEC, per the applicant's referral of the project, issued a letter of no permit necessary dated December 18th, 2020, permitting the resurfacing of the pave areas in the rear of the lot.
I see there's a resolution on tonight. But I think it'd kind of be important to know if there is going to be irrigation there because we're talking about a landscaping plan. Is it things that require water or don't require water, you know? So I think that's kind of something, kind of important, something we should know.
Are you proposing any irrigation? The plans don't propose irrigation.
I don't believe the plan's proposing irrigation.
Well, let's ask the applicant, what are we proposing there? Does it require irrigation?
The plans are not proposing any irrigation. I'm trying to confirm right now if there is any existing in that area.
I would imagine the landscaping plan would be different if it's something that's not going to be irrigated.
Most of the landscaping plan in that area is the existing landscaping that's currently on-site. My site visits previously have shown the landscaping to be in adequate condition in that area.
All right, we can make a condition in the resolution that it be maintained properly, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
One thing, just to clarify, is the board okay with the existing landscaping on site in lieu of new street tree plantings for the ARV's comments?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I've said at the last meeting, this is a vacant store. It's been there for a very long time, and let's get it occupied. So I mean, it doesn't, the site doesn't look horrible, you know, and we could put a requirement in that resolution saying that they have to maintain what's on site now. Anyone else? George, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have no public hearings today. Any public comments on resolutions? Anyone from the public on the resolutions that are on the agenda? Okay, star six if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, before we do get to the resolutions, I'm just going to note, we, the Resolution eight for Mary Ellen Real Estate, it came on late onto the agenda, but it's really, you know, there's no change into what was already approved. It's just a procedural matter of the building permit. Greg, do you want to explain it?
Correct, yes. So just very briefly, when I had written the original final approval resolution, there were a number of conditions that needed to be satisfied prior to the signature of MYLAR, such as the receipt of a Suffolk County DPW permit and other conditions, just as a matter, as you said, procedurally. The only conditions, I've modified the placement of them in terms of sequencing, so now the only things that are going to be required prior to the signature of MYLAR will be the revisions that are necessary to the plans, and the filing of covenants, as well as a cross-access agreement. All of the other, you know, the bulk of the other information, such as the receipt of a Chapter two twenty-nine excavation permit, Riverhead Water District, DPW Health Department, all of those necessary pieces are still in place, but they're just put as a condition prior to the issuance of a building permit. And what that'll do is that'll allow the applicant's attorney now to work and file these covenants based off this resolution, get those covenants filed, and allow them to move forward in a quicker, more efficient manner.
All right, I would agree with that assessment. It's been discussed numerous, numerous times here, and it's nothing that another public hearing, it wouldn't meet the criteria of a public hearing, so I would be in agreement with you.
There's no substantive changes. It's just a matter of internal sequencing. The end result ultimately will be the same, you know, all these conditions will need to be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit, and I mean, that's really the ultimate goal for this project.
So just for the record, Greg did reach out to me and ask if we could put it on the agenda, and the way it's explained, there was no reason to hold this up for another two weeks. It's very a minor change. I know we like to get them ahead of time, but, you know, I can't see holding this up for two more weeks.
Just in looking at the resolution, it looks like it's the entire resolution all over again, and just with the amendments that you proposed.
So what I did is I...
It's really not, we're amending A, B, and C, it's the whole resolution.
It's technically a new resolution. I did speak with counsel. I did put a little recitation in there, whereas the planning board approved this original resolution, and it approved with a number of conditions. The applicant had petitioned the planning department to amend it specifically regarding the sequencing of conditions as it relate to signature of MYLAR and issuance of building permits. We state that the applicant has considered, the board has considered the applicant's request to amend the conditions, and that this resolution will supersede the conditions of the previous approval, so that they'll beholden to this resolution.
But you just addressed that, when we do the covenants, we have problems if we have multiple resolutions. How does the attorney refer to the resolution, and it's amended by this, and now then Laura and I are trying to piece together what the new resolution is, and we essentially write it over again. So it's much easier to have you folks do a clean start over, if you don't mind, that's better work.
That's fine. It's cleaner. Okay, thank you. All right, any, there were no comments, I'll ask one last time, any comments on resolutions? Okay.
I move Resolution number six for the East End Country Kitchens, final approval, so moved.
Second.
Second motion?
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash six, East End Country Kitchens for final approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Resolution double oh seven, Littlewood Riverhead. Resolution granting administrative approval for a site plan application seeking approval to renovate and repurpose a vacant retail space located eleven fifty-one Old Country Road.
Second.
Previously occupied by Toys R Us. The application proposes remodeling of the existing thirty-five thousand square foot building into a grocery store. Proposed actions include facade upgrades, the installation of grease trap tied into existing sanitary sewer, replacement of the portion of the parking lot with heavy-duty asphalt, and restriping back to width. Parking stalls are ten by twenty. That's it.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve Resolution seven for LIDL Riverhead, granting administrative approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Move Resolution number eight for Mary Ellen Real Estate LLC, amending the conditions of Resolution number two of two thousand and twenty-one, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution eight for Mary Ellen Real Estate, amending a previous resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Okay, any public comments on any matter in front of the planning board? Anyone wish to speak or ask any questions? Okay, minutes of January seventh.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of January seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain because I wasn't here, but it's four to one abstention. Minutes are approved. Any other business the board wants to discuss?
Yes, I would like to discuss something. In talking with people in our community, some people are very upset that they can go to Walmart and be jammed in like a can of sardines, but they can't come here and participate in the meetings. So I don't know if it's a question for the Department of Law or the Planning Department, but we have marked off seats every six feet. I don't know why the general public can't come here. I know it's a order from our governor, or if it's local, but people want to come here and participate, and I'm hearing it more and more in our meetings and probably the town board meetings also. Everybody wears a mask now, and seats are marked clearly for six feet apart, and I think it's something that we should address.
Okay, so, I mean, it's my understanding that it is the town supervisor's call on having the town hall shut down, and who's allowed to come into the building and who's not allowed to come into the building, but we could certainly pose that question, and I'll ask Jefferson if you could just confirm that and ask the question that Ed had put forth here, and what the understanding is of why we're shut down. But I, my, my interpretation is it's the town supervisor's call, and I don't believe anybody comes to the town board meetings because of the pandemic. I mean, that's the obvious reason, but let's confirm that, and please get back to us.
Thank you.
Then until, actually, all public meetings?
I believe so.
And not even just ours, the town board and anything else, any other committees?
I'm just relaying back what I'm hearing.
Sure, of course, we'll get, we'll get an answer. Okay, next meeting is Thursday, February fourth at seven P M. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.